Next, we have Tara. And let me preface the next two items. We have the budget discussion with Tara and then we also have capital projects with Anthony. This is probably going to be the two big chunks of our meeting today and was kind of set up that way because obviously we have a lot coming down the road here on our plate. So just keep in mind, there's going to be a lot of information here and we've got some updates on things. So just try to bear with us and hang in there and let's try to keep it organized and not throw too many ideas out because there's going to be a lot going on. So Tara, thank you.
Good evening. Thank you. This year, our approach to our budget process, we had the opportunity to approach it differently than we traditionally have. It pushes your finance officer a little out of her comfort zone. In the past, we have seen this meeting held about a month prior. And I bring to you lots of facts and figures and numbers and options. This year, we're actually approaching it from a viewpoint of open communication with our county commissioners. And you've probably heard me say before, I think our whole budget process is backwards with the state kind of coming in at the end and the local conversations happening earlier in the year. So we haven't been able to flip-flop that because the state is on their own timeline, of course. But we do want to have conversation on a local level. Back in here. Sorry about that. So just 85% of our operating budget is personnel-related. And a lot of that is funded through state funding and it's tied to formulas and those formulas are built on enrollment or other characteristics in our county. So the vast majority of our funding pretty much takes care of itself as long as the state will continue funding their, what they deem as the mandatory increases with insurance and retirement and how many of this we're supposed to have and how many of that. So we won't spend a whole lot of time talking about that area. But we did have earlier conversations about our teacher supplement information. Andrew, if you will pull up the supplement comparisons with the chart. This is not new material. You have seen this before. We've shared this with various groups. But what this does represent is the bachelor degree teaching supplements. In our district, you will see where the blue line that starts down towards the bottom and as you work your way across the graph with years of experience, about midway, I think it's at year 12, we become the very last line on the graph. And of course, this is the annual supplement that we determine here locally that we're going to pay in addition to what the state sets as the consistent salary schedule for all teachers across the state based on their experience levels. So what this graph represents well is that there is not much growth. We start out towards the bottom, not at the bottom, but very close, and then there's no growth in our supplement scale as you go across years of experience. And I think this chart represents that well. If you'll scroll down just a little bit, we have another set of charts just to show by school system where we're at with our annual supplement. The first one is with no experience, our teachers coming in. They receive currently this year $33,000 from the state, all across the state. And then you can see the different degrees of supplements from each of local districts or districts about our size or districts that we compete with in our county. So there's that information. And it follows with a chart for those in the middle of the salary range with 15 years of experience and then again 30. So if you look at each of the columns, you will see the same information from the original chart that shows there's not any growth and where lots of other systems gain over experience levels we hear in Rowan Salisbury School System do not. Okay? And then following that, we're not going to go through them, but same information for our teachers that have obtained their master's degree. And so it paints the same picture as the other graphs. All right? If you will go back to the board agenda information and pull up the other document. Here again, this is not new material to you either. Actually, questions came in and Dr. Moody addressed it through an email and I have simply pulled that in as a reminder here. If you're looking at those 1% supplement increase, which is what would get us to be competitive with what people are currently paying if they give no raises, you're under $858,000 is what we project it would cost to bump our certified teaching supplements by 1%. 1% increase for our teachers. But what would it cost to give all RSS employees a 1% increase? Because when you delve in and you start looking at our support areas, the same picture is painted for all the support areas as it is directly in the classroom. And so when we run those figures, it's a little less than $1.2 million there that would take care of our teachers as well as all other staff in our district from our maintenance department, our school food service department, our clerical administrators, teachers, coaches, all of those instructional coaches, all of those categories. And then we went on again and talked about...
That's true, yes.
Yes, yes. That is all staff in our district. So you can see, we rank at the bottom of those that we normally compare ourselves with and it would take about 1% increase to get us to where people are at now. Now, if they make progress, then we'll be behind again as well. So what does that mean for each individual teacher? If it was a 1% increase for what they're currently making between their salary and their supplement right now, it would be about $350 for a beginning teacher, $460 for 15 years of experience and $525 for 30 years. And there again, we pulled out Charlotte Mac. Even though we do compete for staff with them, we do, they were kind of so far off the chart that, you know, we want to start out being realistic.
Maybe steps.
About that information. Okay. Now, do you want me to go through the few points I have and then you go back and turn it over?
Yeah, that'd be fine. Unless anybody has any questions they want to throw in right now. We're going to go back, so we're not skipping anything. But go ahead, Tara, thanks.
So we have talked as an administrative team and in previous discussions that we feel like this is the area that we currently need to place our focus on and our priority. And we'll turn that over to you in just a few minutes and let you discuss, get where your thoughts are on there. Just a couple of other notes as we are going into the budget. Mandatory increases are always a huge concern for us because even though employees may be paid with local money, the state will not pay for any of our maintenance positions. They consider that building-related and that is local. We supplement a lot of the state funding with counterparts on local, teachers included. The state still sets the retirement match that we must make for each employee and the insurance premiums come from the state level. So when those change, state traditionally has always taken care of that for state employees, but we're responsible for that on the local side. So if there's an increase in insurance, we need to look at that on the local side. Insurance at this point is projected to remain the same next year, which is wonderful news because it has been rising at double-digit figures the last few years. Retirement match is really up in the air. You know, it could run us up to about $180,000 on current projections, but that's just kind of guestimates at the state level at this point. That's usually one of the last pieces to fall into place. But driver's ed, you have heard the concerns there as a board and even if we are allowed to charge the $65 that is currently allowable, then it's still going to cost probably 200-plus for each student to run the program. So we're looking at this very there. We'll have to address that. Teacher assistance, we don't know what the state's going to do on that part. The only thing that is currently out is the governor's proposed budget and he did request, I want to say 64 million, I don't have it up right now, but to keep funding at the same level. There were some lottery funds, I believe, that were shifted over to support that current level of teacher assistance that we're employing. So he's made that recommendation, but we'll have to see what the Senate and the House propose and then how they hash it out in the long run. So that's still up in the air if it will be at current level or there will be additional state cuts there. An athletic plan, we're currently trying to do in an assessment both on the capital side, I won't steal any thunder, from the capital presentation. I don't think this is addressed tonight, but Dr. Hobbs is performing an assessment on both the coaching supplement side and comparing us to surrounding counties because might have the same thing happen as we do with our other staff as far as retention and then also looking at the capital needs for the athletics. We earlier mentioned a grant writing position. That was a recommendation of a committee that had aligned with the strategic plan for our system. We have put that in the wish list for the impact fund that's separate from us but is supporting some of our initiatives. So that's still kind of out there. At this point, what our staff recommendation from staff is to address the supplements and the salary in the discussion with commissioners and have that be the focus and then give consideration through either repurposing as we've gotten quite, you know, we've developed some expertise in that area over the last year or two, but to either repurpose through our existing budget by prioritizing, seek external funding, grants or support from foundations or scheduling consideration for a later budget such as with the athletic, you know, that assessment may come through and that may be something we address through one of these alternate routes. The only other thing I want to mention before I kind of turn it over, there is House Bill 557 that is out there currently and I will make sure that gets in your hotline information for this week. And it deals with charter schools and we have had limited impact because we have not had a charter school take up residence within our county at this, up until this time in many, many years. But, you know, there's always the opportunity for more applications to come into the state. But there are issues included in that House bill such as tapping into money sources twice. So whereas now we send charter schools an appropriate portion for local funding along with other funding, there are provisions in here where they would, once we use fund balance, which was really in some cases that local funding coming in, they'd get it the first time, but then when we use our fund balance, they would get a second cut from that same funding source. So there's a lot of issues in there and I will send that to you, ask you to digest that. Call me if you want to have some conversations about it. And please, if you have any contacts at the state level, if you will share our concerns, your concerns, our concerns with them regarding that information and what that impact will be for Rowan Salisbury.
Questions, comments? Chuck?
I will push the red button because I've got a comment and some questions. I didn't bring this up with one of our legislators in Raleigh this past week because that bill is difficult to read. I read it and I didn't, I had a slight idea what they meant. And the interpretation was given to me was that this was positive for the public schools. Now, I'm not saying this is true, that's just my understanding of what was told to me. It caused the charter schools to put more skin in the game. They had to come up with more money and more input. Now, that's my understanding from that. And I said the bill is very difficult to read and I could not read it and give you a reading on it that, what it meant. Back to the 1% raise, how many, how short are we on a teacher assistance? Do we have a shortage of teacher assistance or we have all those positions filled?
We have funded based on the state funding that we received last year. So those are all filled at this point.
Talking about needs, what are our needs in teacher assistance?
I'm trying to know how to address that one.
Do we have what we need, teacher assistance in all the classrooms we need teacher assistance in?
Well, we don't because, and I don't remember the exact number after we moved some around, but I think we ended up losing 16 total last year.
Okay, that answers my question. We do not have enough. Now, my quick math on the starting teachers would be about $29 a month, 15 years, $39 a month, 30 years, $44 a month. How many TAs would that support if we used that money for teacher assistance? That's quick math, I want to ask you. Just take the concept and think about what we could do with that. Would it be meaningful? Because I, I don't think that much money would be meaningful for the teacher. I think they, based on my conversations with a few teachers, that they would like to have a teacher's assistant in their class and that would trump the amount of money they would be getting with 1% raise.
So your question was if we took that $857,000?
Yeah, how many TAs could we hire? That shortens it up. Thank you.
For the 850, is that what you were looking at?
For the money, that 1% we'd be putting into raises for teachers and staff. If we purpose that, our teacher's assistance, how would that affect that population?
Somewhere in the 20s, high 20 range.
So we could actually get all the TAs that we're short and need plus some. You said 16, I believe, did you?
Well, that's actually low, I think. I don't remember. It was, it might have been closer to, might have been mid to upper 20s now that I'm thinking about it. I know we moved some folks around into different positions. So it put us close. I can't tell off the top of my head.
And just in closure, that is my point. I would like to see this money dedicated to TAs in the classrooms instead of the 1% to teachers and staff. I think that would be more meaningful and more benefit to the school system than the small raises that they would get. And that, I may be in the minority on that, but that's my belief.
Dean?
I don't know if this makes you in the minority, but I'm about to say, but I would not agree with what you just said. As a matter of fact, I would think that would be another discussion. I don't think we should do anything to take away any possibility of any percent raise to our current teachers. TAs do not affect all the teachers. There's only a small population of the teachers that TAs even affect. So I wouldn't think it would be fair to even have this conversation about taking a potential 1% for all teachers and putting it just for TAs because that would only, and in your several conversations you say you had, I'm assuming that was with an elementary school teacher that maybe lost their TA and they don't speak on behalf of all the couple thousand teachers that we have. So just for the record, I'm in favor of TAs. I'm also in favor of giving all of our teachers as much of a raise as we can and not sacrificing one for the other. So that's, I'll just say that about the TA conversation for now.
Chuck, if I could just respond to that, I think you are sacrificing, sacrificing classrooms that need TAs, do not have them because we do not have the funding for that.
But sacrificing the need, or rewind, need is a relative, I think, word to use there because if I need something, that means I can't live without it. And they've seemed to have made it a year without those 16. Once again, I'm an advocate of TAs. I have an elementary school kindergarten wife that I live with every day of my life and she values her TA. But at the same time, I think it would be sacrificing if everybody, to group all teachers into that conversation. I'm an advocate, what I'm saying in short is I'm an advocate of both, TAs and giving raises. I don't think we should sacrifice one for the other. And this, once again, is communication, we're not making decisions tonight. I'm just voicing my opinion about that.
Yeah, and this is going to be a process too. So we've got a little bit of time. So we definitely need to think about it and have the discussions and kind of go home and bounce it around and talk with folks and we'll come back and your opinions may change again. So Dr. Miller?
I think it would be helpful in a follow-up discussion if we could have the actual data relative to how many TAs we currently have and if we had them all in first grade, all in second, I mean, in other words, a graduated scale of, obviously at one time when Hunt initiated them, we had them K3, but how many do we have now? And if we had all K1, K and 1, how many that would be and how many we'd need that that would be, give us some data to make a decision on.
Tara, did you have something else you wanted to say?
It was along the same lines you were. Just to reiterate that we have not been given anything yet, just to make sure we understood that this is to prepare us for discussions with the county, but you covered it.
Yeah, and technically, if you go back to last year when we had all those deep cuts, the numbers are the same from last year and we have that information back in, you know, the annals of history. But so, but I guess we can still show a breakdown of currently what we have by grade. We could certainly do that and by school if we wanted to do that.
Right, and we have not, we have not been fully funded by grade. The funding doesn't come by classroom teacher. It comes by a number of students and it's a different formula than the teacher formula.
Susan?
And when we have that discussion, I would like to see also individual schools and how they use their teacher assistance because all the assistants are not in K through 3 all the time or K through 2 or K1. So if we could have a breakdown of how each school uses their assistants, that would be helpful.
Other questions, comments? And we can plan, let's see, this is April, so we've got May and June will be when we actually make the final approval for this, for the submittal to the county, correct? On our end?
Well, that should be part of the discussion at the end of this month, what that timeline looks like. It's during June when they normally pass their budget, but again, this year's...
We'll probably give it, possibly give it to them in May. Yeah, okay. Okay. Dean?
Just for clarification, since discussion has been mentioned several times, so when is this discussion? I thought that's what, I don't want to miss an opportunity to discuss, so I'm asking. I thought we were discussing, but we keep referring to when we do discuss, but...
You're welcome to continue discussing. We can send some of this information out through the hotline, so you'll have it as soon as possible. There will be a board meeting the week that that April 29 meeting with the county commissioners falls. So we'll have another opportunity at the business meeting to continue the discussion.
Yeah, and we can add this as an agenda item to the business meeting. If there's additional information, we can go back and just lay that out and then couple this information with that information and go from there. Because generally, we, I mean, we would want to try to keep most of the budget stuff together as opposed to breaking it up and voting on one piece here and one piece there, but we can also, we may get in some situations where we look at that individually too, so just depending on what happens.
And we're, this year, we're not trying to finalize and formalize what the request is. It's my understanding that's part of the reason of the meeting with the commissioners is to talk about that on both sides before we make, here's what Rowan Salisbury School's request is. So the request doesn't come before the meeting. That should be a product of that joint meeting together.
Correct.
So we are meeting again after the joint meeting? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, we won't have a board meeting in the month of April after the joint meeting. Actually, our business meeting will be before our joint retreat.
So back to my original question, when will the bulk of this discussion be taking place? If not now?
A lot of it's going to take place at the retreat and then from there, you know, again, we're not going to sit down there and lay out the budgets and we're not going to say this is what we want and the county's going to say that's great, here's what you've got and take it back. I mean, there's going to be some discussion on both sides, but I think we should have a pretty good understanding at that point of kind of what we can expect and what the county thinks they can do and what, you know, what we want to go, the direction we want to go. So we may very well need to get back together and have a called meeting at the beginning of May to again, basically just focus on what we get in the joint retreat and then make those decisions. So, because we probably can't, we don't want to wait till the end of May, obviously, so...
Well, with that said, that kind of answered my question. I'll make one more point of discussion just so I don't have to say it again if I forget. I think it's worth noting in the comparison, this chart of the comparison of bachelor degree, the first one that you showed was, we've seen it for the second or third time. Just for a point of reference, if I'm reading this correctly and we all, we'd like to look at Mooresville and what they've done, I think it's worth noting when we think about raises or any increase that it seems as if, unless I'm off a little, they're putting a little more emphasis and value on experienced teachers because we see a pretty large jump there and I would definitely be in favor of considering that if there's options on the table. I think that's worth noting.
Chuck and then Dr. Miller.
Just for, are we putting into our budget the additional TAs that we actually need along with the raise? That's a different conversation if we're doing that.
That's for the board to decide.
Well, we'll have that option, the 1% raise plus the 20, I'll use that figure loosely, the 20 TAs that we need to make up for what we had lost and what we actually need in our classrooms. I don't want anyone to think I'm against teachers getting raises. I think they're well, way underpaid and they do need the wages, but I also think we need to have classrooms filled up with teachers and TAs for teaching before we start giving anyone salaries increases.
Dr. Miller?
Just clarify for me the meeting process. I thought our joint retreat was the last Monday. It's not? It's a Wednesday you're talking about?
Yeah, it's the 29th. 29th. And I didn't remember off the top of my head the day of the week that falls, but I just remember the date, so. So we will likely, to Dean's point, we'll probably have to pull that. Is there a problem with that day of the week?
Yeah, I'm out of time because I had the 27th on my calendar that whole time.
Well, it's, yeah, I think it's been the 29th. I didn't, I don't think we discussed the day of the week necessarily, but...
Well, the 27th will be the normal Board of Education's business meeting.
Yes, business meeting.
And then the 29th is the retreat. And then the 11th, are we having a work session the 11th of May?
That sounds right, yeah.
So that may take care of the need depending on what happens on the 29th or, because you mentioned a called meeting, still may...
Yeah, and we could certainly repurpose, not repurpose, but I mean, use a large chunk of that for that and we could even, if there need to be votes taken on that because of the timeline, we could certainly do that for the budget process. Dean?
One more question of clarification on this sheet of Q and As. Maybe everybody in here knows what this means but me, but just so I know, like under the first question and the answer says in parentheses, "This number includes required matching benefits at the current rate of 23%." Can you speak that elementary to me?
That's the retirement rate match that we must put towards every dollar of salary that goes as well as insurance for our employees. And when you combine those two rates, it comes up to about 23% and FICA, the payroll taxes.
If we give the 1% salary raise, that 23% is included in there?
I'm just clarifying where the 23% comes from.
7.65% is FICA and currently 15.21% is retirement rate match.
So it's basically 23% of the 1% increase?
Right.
Okay, gotcha.
We just want to let you know, that's not the actual salary figures, but we went ahead and bumped it up for the true cost if we give a 1% salary raise.
And that's important. Any other questions or comments? Did you have something on that, Dr. Moody? No? Okay. All right. Tara, thank you very much and there will be more to come, obviously. And before, yeah, got you. And before we start this, we've had a member ask if we could take a short recess, so can we take a 10-minute break here and we'll come back in about 10 minutes? Thank you.
Worth noting in the comparison, this chart of the comparison of bachelor degree, the first one that you showed was, we've seen it for the second or third time. Just for a point of reference, if I'm reading this correctly and we all, we'd like to look at Mooresville and what they've done, I think it's worth noting when we think about raises or any increase that it seems as if, unless I'm off a little, they're putting a little more emphasis and value on experienced teachers because we see a pretty large jump there and I would definitely be in favor of considering that if there's options on the table. I think that's worth noting.
Chuck and then Dr. Miller.
Just for, are we putting into our budget the additional TAs that we actually need along with the raise? That's a different conversation if we're doing that.
That's for the board to decide.
Well, we'll have that option, the 1% raise plus the 20, I'll use that figure loosely, the 20 TAs that we need to make up for what we had lost and what we actually need in our classrooms. I don't want anyone to think I'm against teachers getting raises. I think they're well, way underpaid and they do need the wages, but I also think we need to have classrooms filled up with teachers and TAs for teaching before we start giving anyone salaries increases.
Dr. Miller?
Just clarify for me the meeting process. I thought our joint retreat was the last Monday. It's not? It's a Wednesday you're talking about?
Yeah, it's the 29th. 29th. And I didn't remember off the top of my head the day of the week that falls, but I just remember the date, so. So we will likely, to Dean's point, we'll probably have to pull that. Is there a problem with that day of the week?
Yeah, I'm out of time because I had the 27th on my calendar that whole time.
Well, it's, yeah, I think it's been the 29th. I didn't, I don't think we discussed the day of the week necessarily, but...
Well, the 27th will be the normal Board of Education's business meeting.
Yes, business meeting.
And then the 29th is the retreat. And then the 11th, are we having a work session the 11th of May?
That sounds right, yeah.
So that may take care of the need depending on what happens on the 29th or, because you mentioned a called meeting, still may...
Yeah, and we could certainly repurpose, not repurpose, but I mean, use a large chunk of that for that and we could even, if there need to be votes taken on that because of the timeline, we could certainly do that for the budget process. Dean?
One more question of clarification on this sheet of Q and As. Maybe everybody in here knows what this means but me, but just so I know, like under the first question and the answer says in parentheses, "This number includes required matching benefits at the current rate of 23%." Can you speak that elementary to me?
That's the retirement rate match that we must put towards every dollar of salary that goes as well as insurance for our employees. And when you combine those two rates, it comes up to about 23%. And when you combine those two rates, it comes up to about twenty-three percent, and FICA, the payroll taxes.
If we give the one percent salary increase, that twenty-three percent is included in there?
Those are billed in.
I'm just clarifying where the twenty-three percent comes from.
Seven point six-five percent is FICA, and currently fifteen point two-one percent is retirement rate match.
So, it's basically twenty-three percent of the one percent increase?
Right.
Okay, gotcha.
We just want to let you know, that's not the actual salary figures, but we went ahead and bumped it up for the true cost if we give a one percent salary increase.
And that's important. Any other questions or comments? Did you have something on that, Dr. Moody? No? Okay. All right. Tara, thank you very much, and there will be more to come, obviously. Anthony?